Okay, we will call the meeting to order. We'll start off with our land acknowledgement. We'd like to begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally used by Anishanabe, O'Nishoni, and Chinotan people. We acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous peoples with whom we share this land today. Are there any declarations of a becunary interest in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act? Seeing none, we'll move right to the delegations. I'll need a motion. Council of the Township of Wellesley accept Darren Renee and Greg Romanek as delegations. Moved by Councillor Seven, seconded by Councillor Ergot. All in favour, and that's carried, so we'll call up Darren Renee, who is the Regional Assurance Partner, MMP L L P audited financial statements.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. So I believe everyone should have the draft financial statements included in their package. So I think the purpose of this meeting is kind of to run through those draft documents and, you know, give you the update on the December 31, 2024 audit process. First, I just want to say thanks for having me here today. As you mentioned, Darren Renee is my name. I'm a partner in our Waterloo, Ontario office. MMP is a large full-service firm. We work, we're a Canadian-based firm. We're only in Canada, and we focus on, you know, medium, small, medium-sized businesses. We call it the mid-market, so we don't, we don't focus on the large, large public companies. We kind of, you know, work in, you know, township, cities, and organizations that Wellesley fits right into. So thanks for having us here. Thanks for appointing us as your auditor for this past fiscal year and giving us the opportunity to work through things with you. And again, thanks, and thanks with Jeff and the team as well, working through the first audit as part of, as part of our experience as well. And I think, you know, we had a positive working relationship, working through things and solving things together. You know, definitely, you know, I don't always get to say that, working with my clients, that, you know, there's a, you know, full transparency, you know, wanting to get to the right answer, and just, you know, pleasant, a pleasant person to work with. So starting with, I think there's a few different items in the, in the package. I'll start with the main audit entitled "The Corporation of the Township of Wellesley Financial Statement, December 31, 2024." Should look like this. It's the big, big document, your main financial statements. So, you know, really focusing high level on some draft figures there, you know, the most important thing to note is on page, pages actually aren't numbered, but it, on the auditor's report page, which is the page that MMP owns, it's important to note that where we're providing what's called an unqualified audit opinion, which is the highest level assurance we can provide as auditors in Canada. And that effectively means the financial statements reflects accurately the financial health of the township. And it means you can, you know, look at these numbers and have trust that they're, you know, they're reasonably supported and been audited. So that's the good news as part of this presentation. Everything in the audit report is, I'll call it standardized boilerplate. The only new thing we'll have this year is, it's called an other matter paragraph, and that just highlights that the comparative figures were audited by another auditor. So nothing unusual there, that standard, everyday wording that you see whenever you transition from one auditor to the, to the next. You know, in terms of, you know, financial highlights, and again, I don't want to, you know, go too, too big into the weeds here, but, you know, just highlighting that, you know, overall financial position is, you know, healthy on the statement of balance sheet, or the balance sheet, also called the statement of financial position. We can see, you know, we have cash balance of $6 million. Total financial assets did decrease from 26 million to 23 million, but most of that actually got deployed into capital assets. So you finished building the rec center and some other capital assets during the year, and that's why you saw corresponding increase of 4 million down in the financial assets. So nothing really to draw attention to on the, on the balance sheet. Income statement-wise, we had an annual surplus of $6 million. That's an accounting surplus, but just important to note that, you know, we're, we're not burning through cash in excess, we're, you know, our revenues are sustaining our operations. You know, surplus last year was 15 million, but there was some one-time funding to help build the rec center, and some of those government transfers that were unique and not reoccurring. So, you know, I think the key takeaway there is most of the revenues expenses are pretty, pretty consistent year over year, and the surplus is, is, you know, building your reserves for those rainy day funds that are, that are set aside. You know, there's lots of notes in the, in the draft statements. I won't go through that in detail unless, you know, anyone wants to kind of chat through any of those, but I think that's what we wanted to say on the Township of Wellesley audit. There's another document in the package called the Audit Findings. So the Audit Findings document, maybe I'll share that so everyone can sort of see what we're looking at here. This is the document we are required to communicate to those charged with governance, which is council, the people in the room here. And this just, you know, provides an update on the highlights. So effectively, we've completed our audit. We're ready to issue the audit formally once we have council's approval of the financial statement drafts, you know, confirming there's nothing we've missed as part of the audit process, any subsequent events, major lawsuits, natural disasters, anything that would be important and critical to know before we release the financial statements, and then collecting some administrative paperwork, representation letter, and stuff of that nature. So we're effectively closed the audit pending that approval, and the draft audit report is dated today if council does approve. Some key highlights, you know, happy to report no, no identified or suspected fraud as part of the audit process, no non-compliance with laws and regulations. Moving over to my next page here, you know, also most important to note as well, we did not identify any significant deficiencies in internal control. So internal controls would be those secondary reviews, approvals, things of that nature. So those basic internal controls do exist at Wellesley, and, you know, that's good news to make sure your financial assets are safeguarded and the right checks and balances are occurring. Risk areas, you know, we look at a lot of things as part of the audit process, but as part of, part of developing the audit plan, we focus on certain areas. And those key areas we selected for the township would be management override of internal controls. So we look for those basic internal controls to happen and occur when the accounting team is making entries, booking things, and, you know, if they have to reallocate things between two, two ledger accounts, that there is those proper approvals and support for those adjustments. So happy to report again, no, no issues there. And revenues, specifically user charges such as, you know, arena rental, stuff of that nature, we identify as a higher risk area just because, you know, revenues have the ability to be, to be, you know, I'll use the word manipulated, not that, you know, they are, but we have to assume there could be some, some adjustments there to try to make sure, you know, revenues are showing healthy amounts for any organization. So, you know, the good takeaway there again is all the charges that we sampled had, you know, good reporting information, good reporting, supporting documentation, and again, were reviewed, approved, and agreed to bylaws where applicable. So good, good financial results there, and internal controls. Key element there of, of an audit process is that the auditor is independent. So again, we're, we're, you know, we formally state that we're independent in our audit report as well, but again, just communicating here again that we, we do take independence seriously. We have a formal client acceptance process, independence check, and everyone on the engagement team as well as MMP is independent of, of the township. And no, yeah, no unadjusted differences as well. So if we work through the audit process and there's, you know, I'll call it a quantitative difference or an error, we are required to definitely adjust it if there, you know, it was a material difference on the statements, and if it wasn't material, we'd have to report that to council as well, just as, you know, hey, you know, the scenario would be, this is only, you know, 10% of our materiality, you know, maybe management didn't want to book the adjustment, and, and we'd have to report that. So you don't have to worry about any of that. We didn't have any of those differences when we worked through the audit process. There's no unadjusted differences to communicate. So that's the audit process as well. There's two additional financial statements there in the package. There's the cemetery trust funds for Lynwood as well as the Hawksville Cemetery, really small, dense audit there. That's just highlighting, you know, the, the small investments that we have there to kind of cover the maintenance and ongoing costs of the, of the fund, the trust funds. No deficits, you know, covering those, those expenses, so the, the interest that's generated on the investment and the income that comes in has been covering those ongoing maintenance costs. So the reserves still keep, keep growing there, nothing to highlight of concern on that side. So I'll stop there. Oh, I guess I'll say no management letter as well. So management letter is a thing we would communicate in terms of if there was internal control deficiencies or best practice, significant gaps in the best practices that we see. So, you know, happy to report, nothing to share on that as well today. So I'll stop there. Obviously, happy to dig in deeper on any of the note disclosures or drafts or if any questions specifically. Obviously, just want to respect everyone's time here today as well, so.
Thank you very much, Darren. Questions? No questions. Not a question, but you started off by suggesting that our, our financial position is in a very healthy position. Can you just expand on that a little bit? That's sort of music to our ears, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear that expanded just a bit.
Yeah, and, you know, there's different ways you can, you can measure financial health, right? So, you know, I always start with, the first indicator is, you know, when we go to that income statement and we see, you know, revenues exceeding our expenses, you know, it means that we're, we're not, you know, digging ourselves in a hole. So on a year-over-year basis, you know, we have a $6 million surplus. Now, the $6 million surplus isn't that, that's just not just, you know, taxpayer money that's just, you know, that we're setting aside. We're, you know, we're deploying a lot in that, in the capital assets and things of that nature, right? But on an accounting basis, when we follow the accounting rules, at least it's your first indicator that we're, you know, we're, we're doing, we're doing our part on, you know, cost control and things of that nature. And then the other thing you can look at is, well, how's our, I'll call it liquidity, right? So balance sheet, you know, we have cash of $6 million, some receivables of a few million dollars, so we'll call it eight or nine million of liquid assets that we could, you know, cover our costs or any surprises for over the next 12 months. And then I can look at, okay, what's the liabilities over the next 12 months? And then I have, you know, accounts payable and some other small costs. So we only have about, I'll call it $3 million of, of, you know, as of December 31, 2024, I have about $3 million on the, on the books of what I have to pay, or forecasted have to pay over the next 12 months. So again, we have seven or eight million dollars of liquid assets, we only have to pay 3 million. So if I think about my 12-month forecast, I'm looking, okay, I can cover all those, those things. Obviously, something can come up tomorrow, and we need to figure that out, right? But as a snapshot at a point in time, the liquidity, or I'll call it working capital is probably a better way to define it, is, is healthy on that side as well. And obviously, we have, you know, our surplus and reserves that are set aside for those rainy day funds. So, yeah, from a, you know, you know, 10,000-foot view, you know, there's nothing that's, that's drawing my attention as being concerning when I look at the, look at the numbers.
It's good to hear. So thank you very much. No questions from council. Well, thank you very much, and have a good evening. You're welcome.
Okay, well, well, maybe we'll sit and, and watch a little bit. Okay. All right. Okay, thanks for having me, everyone.
Thank you. And we'll call up Greg Romanek, Senior Planner with StanTech with regard to the Strovesh Draft Plan of Subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor Noak, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, residents from the Lawrence Street area in the audience. My name is Greg Romanek. I'm a planner with StanTech Consulting Limited. With me this evening is my client and the owner of the subject land, Ron Stroh. Also joining me this evening is my colleague from StanTech, Joe LaFave, who's both a civil engineer and a planner, and him and his team have led the development of the engineering elements of this proposal tonight, and the development of the functional engineering design. I intend to keep my comments relatively brief. I know that staff will be providing you with a more detailed presentation shortly, which will give you more details about this proposal and staff's recommendation. Next slide, thank you. This file and the application have a long history. We began working on this proposal in 2015, when we participated in the rationalization of land process with the township and the community. The outcome of that process was the approval of Regional Plan Amendment Number Three and Township of Wellesley Official Plan Amendment Number Ten, both of which provided for the designation of these lands for urban residential development. That all occurred in the late, or around 2020. These subject applications before you tonight, a draft plan of subdivision and zoning bylaw amendment, are submitted to implement your official plan. And that's a council-approved official plan, as you know. The first draft plan and zoning bylaw amendment application we'd made was in March of 2022. In response to that submission, we received feedback from a number of agencies, from council, the community, and so we determined to make several changes, a number of, not insignificant changes, try to improve the plan, and we resubmitted that plan last year, June of 2024. Over this period, we've had a number of meetings in the neighborhood with neighbors. We've solicited neighbors and residents' feedback. We've participated in several public meetings here with council and the council chamber. So there's been a significant amount of public input, which we've appreciated. We've endeavored to listen, to understand, consider ideas, and we've made adjustments to our proposal over time. Next slide. Our application for this residential subdivision would be located on the lands shown as subject property on the map, shown here in the heavier red line, and it's approximately 25 acres in size. It's a portion of the lands owned by Ron Stroh. The balance, the additional lands that Ron owns, approximately 16 acres, will form a future phase of development. Those lands also have been designated for urban residential growth. That happened since we brought this first phase piece in, so that we're going to look to do in the future. Next slide, thank you. So we're proposing 57 single-detached lots, 17 semi-detached lots, which would mean 34 semi-detached units, 10 townhouse blocks, which could yield up to 54 townhouse units, and there's one block for apartments, townhouse or stacked townhouse, a more intensive form on one block. The lots shown on this drawing here in yellow, backing onto the existing Lawrence Avenue homes, are, have special provisions in the recommended zoning before you tonight to only allow for singles, single detached, and the lots are larger. By today's standards, they're quite a bit larger than typical that you'll see in most urban areas. They're approximately 45 feet width and 115 feet depth. So the idea there was to try to create a viable transition between the existing older urban area and this new area. The mix of housing types and the variety and sizes of lots, so the reason that we have singles, semis, townhouses, and apartments is to meet the regions and your township official plan requirements. There's a requirement that we have a minimum density, 45 persons per hectare, and we are just slightly over that. There's also a requirement that no more than 30% of the housing, I want to get this right here now, yeah, minimum 30% of the proposed units must be other than single or semi-detached development. These are requirements in both the regions and the township official plan, and to meet that, we had to put this kind of mix of housing together. Now, that's kind of the technical regulatory side, but I think the other side of the point on that is that today, with the cost of housing and the need for housing and affordable housing, we need a mix of housing types and different sizes and lot types to meet the varying needs of people in our community. So that's what's led us primarily to this plan. So some of the highlights and the benefits that we see in this plan would be, there will be the creation of a 1.25-acre neighborhood park central to the area, both new and old. There's proposed to be a six-meter linear parkway along the west side of, entire west side of the property, in which my client has agreed that he will build a multi-use pathway system. I want to draw to the council's attention that this idea for this linear parkway, this north-south linear parkway, was a vision by StanTech with our client. This is something we proposed back in 2020. Our vision, and we've, we've communicated this with staff and others, is that in time, we would very much encourage the township to look to expand the width of that linear parkway by at least doubling it what it, what we're providing, with, maybe that's future development down the line to the west in the future, or even just other ways of acquiring additional lands, which, within which this community trail pathway can run. We've seen this in a lot of communities. It makes for a really nice community facility and feature. Within our proposal, streets have been designed and will accommodate, and we, we know that we will be providing sidewalks on both sides of all streets. There's to be a 2.7-acre open space stormwater management block, which will be landscaped, and it will in time emerge to be very much of a natural open area, which will be an asset to the area, and it'll be wildlife and birds, and it'll be a nice place to walk around and see. The subject lands are 12- to 15-minute walk to the Wellesley downtown, to the new sportsplex, and to our community facilities. So this subdivision will be very accessible for the people who live there to the amenities in the community, and they will also provide for a new market. They'll, they'll provide business to your existing commercial area in downtown Wellesley, and see a lot of activity at your sportsplex, and there'll be people walking by on the community trail. So it's a good thing from that point of view. Many of the lots are solar-oriented. They have a south-facing front or backyard, so solar orientation and possible capitalization on that in the future is possible. The transportation layout and design will, will support possible future public transit, should it ever come out to Wellesley in this area. And in our view, the lands represent a logical rounding out of the village of Wellesley. So in conclusion, we, we really have worked very hard over the last 10 years with staff, with council, and the community to address all of the technical requirements and matters of concern. We'd like to thank everyone, staff, council, and the community for their feedback and work with us, and we believe the plan has become better because of that. Our objective, and this came from my client, has always been to put forward a development proposal, which we believe would be a benefit and an asset to the village of, to the township of Wellesley, and the village of Wellesley. And we believe this is a good plan for the township and for the village. We fully support staff's report, 100%, and we ask council for your approval. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions now, or I can come back up at a later time if need be.
Questions at this point? Okay, we'll just hang around, though.
I'll hang around. Thank you very much.
So I think what, with council's permission, I will bring back the Recreation Committee report after we do with the planning report. So if Councillor Brick would like to chair the planning report.
Thank you, Mayor Noak. So we'll move to staff presentation. I invite Bobby Sozzer, Planner, read P and D 11 slash 2025 for the Plan of Subdivision Application 30T 22501 and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application ZB 0522.
Good evening. So, John? Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm here tonight to provide a brief presentation on Draft Plan of Subdivision Application 30T 22501 and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application ZBA 0522, otherwise known as the Strovesh Subdivision. Next slide, please. So the purpose and objectives of this presentation is to present the proposed application, provide an overview of the public feedback, and to provide staff's recommendation. Next slide, please. So the timeline of this project was, the application was submitted back in March of 2022. This was followed by an informal public meeting in June of that year. The applicant then, based on feedback from staff and agencies and public, submitted a revised plan in June of 2024. This was followed by a statutory public meeting in October of 2024, which brings us to today, where the application is being considered. Next slide, please. So a bit of a description of the plan. It's a concurrent draft plan of subdivision application and zoning bylaw amendment that seeks to permit the development of singles, semis, townhouses, and potentially stacked townhouses or apartments ranging between 157 and 169 units. The plan features a central neighborhood park, a grid layout, as well as a stormwater management facility, and a linear park that is proposed to be a multi-use trail. The zone change proposed is from an agricultural zone, A1, to urban residential, urban residential 2, and urban residential 3, as well as open space. Next slide, please. Some key features to note about the plan are that it provides nearly two acres of parkland through the neighborhood park in the center, as well as the linear trail. The linear trail provides for safe pedestrian movement from Gerber Road to the northern portion of the Plan of Subdivision. There are larger lot singles proposed along the homes that back onto Lawrence to maximize compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The plan also features a mix of housing options that add to the diversity of the housing stock in Wellesley. This includes town, townhomes with the option to build stacked townhomes or apartments on Block 11, highlighted in orange on the plan. Next slide, please. In terms of the policy context of this Plan of Subdivision, the provincial planning statement contains policies that support the development within settlement areas. They also contain policies that support compact and efficient use of land. In terms of the regional official plan policies, there's policies in there that support a diverse housing options through arranging the mix of housing types, as well as minimum density requirements of 45 people and jobs per hectare. This plan achieves both of these policies through the housing mix provided. Within the Township of Wellesley official plan, the lands are within the urban designated greenfield area. This designation applies to areas in the Wellesley urban area for residential development. Overall, staff believe that the proposed subdivision is consistent with and conforms to the relevant provincial and local policies. Next slide, please. Staff, township staff, and the relevant agencies have received, have reviewed the submission and are satisfied that all comments have been addressed, either through the revised plan or through conditions of draft approval. Next slide, please. In terms of the public In terms of the public feedback, in addition to today's meeting, there have been three other public meetings held for the public to provide input. In total, staff have received eight written submissions from the public, and the comments are summarized on this slide. They range from concerns around noise, dust, and light pollution through the construction of the plan, traffic, parking, and pedestrian safety, municipal drainage, privacy compatibility with neighboring properties, and the loss of green space and farmland. There was also a petition signed by 38 members of the public related to compatibility concerns and the location of the linear trail. Additional detail about how this feedback was addressed is provided in the staff report. Overall, staff are satisfied that these items have been appropriately addressed where possible through revisions to this plan or through conditions of draft approval. Next slide, please. So our recommendation, it is staff's opinion that these applications represent good planning and are consistent with and conform to the relevant policies, including the provincial planning statement, the regional official plan, and the township official plan. The recommendation is that council approve both the application for the plan of subdivision and the associated zoning bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll just move to, or open it up the floor.
Or questions?
Open up the floor to questions, so. Any questions at this time?
Just a comment. I think I'm just recalling the last public meeting we had with regard to this subdivision, and I remember that there were a number of concerns that were brought forward at that time, and you're confident that they've all been addressed as best as possible, I think. I don't think the plan has changed that much from that initial draft, or has it? Or do you, you probably weren't here there.
So the plan hasn't changed dramatically since the last recent mission from June of 2024? But from staff's perspective, I believe the, all the things that can be addressed have been appropriately through the conditions of draft approval, as well as the revised submission.
Any other questions? Seeing none. So we'll move to the staff report then. So PND 11/2025, plan of subdivision application, 30T 22501, and zoning bylaw amendment application, ZBA 0522. The motion that the council of the township of Wellesley pursuant to Section 51, brackets 31 of the Planning Act, RSO 1990 CP 13, as amended, grant a draft approval to the plan of subdivision application, 30T-22501, made by Stantec on behalf of Strovese, Ontario, Inc., in the township of Wellesley, subject to the conditions outlined in attachment one to this report. And further, that the council of the township of Wellesley authority pursuant to Section 51, brackets 58, and 51, brackets 59 of the Planning Act, RSO 1990 CP 13, as amended, is hereby delegated to the Director of Development Services, and approval of the final plan of subdivision for registration pursuant to Section 58, brackets 51 of the Planning Act shall be evidenced by the signature of the director. And further, that the council of the township of Wellesley adopt the zoning bylaw amendment for file ZBA 05-22 outlined in attachment two to this report to change the zoning from agricultural A1 to the following: urban residential 2 with site-specific provisions, UR2 to UR5; urban residential 3 with site-specific provisions, UR3-1; urban residential with site-specific provisions, UR16; and open spaces OS. May I have a mover? Councillor Hergit, secondary, councillor seven. Does staff want to bring anything further on this?
I can just maybe provide some further walkthrough of the recommendation. I know this is the first time that this council has considered a draft plan of subdivision, so essentially what this is before you is an approval in principle. So it doesn't mean that lots are going to be developed tomorrow, or construction is going to start next week, or anything like that. What this essentially is, is an approval in principle. There's still a number of conditions outlined in the report. I can't remember how many there are. There's upwards of 30 to 40 conditions that the developer has to meet prior to receiving final approval, prior to starting work on the subdivision. So those are things like, you know, having a construction plan in place so that things like undue noise and dust during construction are mitigated, things like a park plan. So what kind of treatment does the park block get before we accept it as township land? And there's a number of other conditions in there, detailed engineering drawings. Tonight, we have Andrea Reed from GEI. She's the township engineer. She's on virtually tonight. She undertook the entire, the review of the subdivision from an engineering perspective so that we're comfortable with putting forward a plan for draft approval to you tonight that can be engineered properly and safely for not only the corporations, but the corporation of the township, but for the residents that are going to be living in and around this development. We also have Tommy Jackson. He's our municipal drainage superintendent. He's here tonight to answer any questions, if you may have any, about municipal drainage. And so these lands drain to municipal drain, and that'll require some improvements, which are also conditions, part of the conditions of draft approval. So it's, what I like to consider, like tonight, is the recommendation before you is kind of the end of the beginning, in the sense that the staff has a good comfort level, that enough information and comments that have been addressed. We have a good level of comfort that this development can proceed. It doesn't mean that it's over. It means that the detailed work can begin before lots can go into the ground. And so that's the first part of the recommendation. The second part is, there's a number of, once a plan gets registered, or it's getting close to registration, similar to what we did with previous condo developments, is that the delegation of authority to sign some of those documents, the registered plans, a number of other things that, kind of the nuts and bolts of it, get delegated to the Director of Development Services, which is me, so that we're not coming to you asking every single time we need something signed. Some of these things are fairly routine when you get to registering a subdivision, and we don't have a delegation bylaw yet, but that is certainly on the books to bring to you at some point in the future. And then the third is something that you're a little bit more familiar with is the zoning bylaw amendment. So the subdivision and the zoning bylaw have to go hand in hand. One of the conditions that they need to meet is that when they are building the subdivision, it has to conform to the zoning bylaw amendment that was passed for the property. And so that's the third part. There's a number of site-specific recommendations, basically meaning there are certain things that we varied in the zoning bylaw. Not every development, as you can imagine, fits in a nice tidy box in our zoning bylaws. Zoning bylaw is written at a point in time, and certain developments need site-specific provisions in order to make it work. We review those, and we review and analyze those to make sure that they're still meeting the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, right? That's one of the key tests, and we feel they are, they are still doing that. So that's the third part of the recommendation. And staff's available for any questions you might have. I think that's about it. Councillor Brick, thank you.
Thank you. Open up the floor to questions. Councillor Hergit?
Just wondering about parking in there. It seems pretty congested. Have you put thought into that, or what kind of formula would you use to look at something like that?
So the parking standards are one of those things that's outlined in the zoning bylaw. There's a number of parking space requirements for different unit types. For example, singles and semis require two spaces. Street-fronting towns require two spaces. I can't remember them all off the top of my head. We did review that. Certainly another, there aren't, in the zoning bylaw, I think, I'm pretty sure it's safe to say, Bobby, there weren't any changes or variances requested for reduced parking standard as in our zoning bylaw. So what you see in our zoning bylaw, we're getting in this plan. In addition to that, one of the conditions of the draft approval is a parking plan. So part of that work is showing us how many spaces are available, where they are, on street and off-street, and that's something that we get to review and sign off of before they can proceed.
I've got some too. I'm just wondering a little bit on timing. I know you may not be able to answer, maybe Mr. Arminik can answer, but how long is it going to take, do you think, for them to fulfill the 30 or 40 issues that you've mentioned, and then put servicing into the ground until we see the first house built? Are you thinking of a year or more?
I don't know if I'd be able to answer that.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Mr. Mayor. What I can say is that once you get draft, if draft approval is granted, it can, it kind of can move as fast or as slow as, you know, the conditions allow, right? So I presume, I'm not a developer, but I presume it has to do a little bit with market conditions. It has a little bit to do with how quickly the developer can mobilize their staff to produce the plans and drawings and all those types of things that we need to see, as well as staff time to review that. So I know that's not a very clear answer for you, but certainly I don't anticipate any shovels in the ground this year. I think I could say that for certain. But, you know, there's a subdivision agreement that needs to be written and registered and a number of different steps, but I don't know if the owner applicant would have a better idea of that, but that's my thoughts.
I'll go ask Mr. Arminik to address that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think Tim has hit it pretty much head-on. I mean, we've started talking about possible approaches. Market is definitely a factor these days. Things are in a bit of an uncertain state, as we know, and that's a reality. And it is true, too, that for us to satisfy and address all of the conditions, move through detailed design, and get this ready to be addressed in an agreement and move towards tendering, that's a lot of work. Like, I would say, you know, if everything was humming and just moving ahead full bore, and all the horses were pulling together, including our team and staff team, which, you know, that's happened, and it worked very well. But I think the earliest you could ever get into the ground would be sometime next year, and that's, you know, I'm not going to say that's going to happen because we don't know. I think all of those things are now going to be things we're going to have to look at. So my client, it's a big endeavor and a big investment to be forward. But Ron's been very interested in this proposal, and he's built here in Wellesley. I think he feels a very proud and committed stake in the community, and he wants to do as much here as he can, and he's looking at it very seriously.
Yeah, I can accept that answer, and I fully understand the challenge with that answer.
Any questions? I've got a, oh, I just scratched my head. Oh, sorry. Okay. I've got a couple, starting with the stormwater management pond. Is that pond meant to serve the phase one and phase two of the development, or would there be a secondary pond for phase two?
Evening, Councillor Eric. I'm Joel Lefave, so civil engineer and project manager and planner with Stantec. So our stormwater design considers both phases, so the pond size for the entire development, as well as a large external catchment area from the west, which, so that, and the farm field to the west currently drains overland and via the path drain through the Strovese subdivision. So all of that external area is accounted for as well. So both phase one, the future phase two, could be part of a separate subdivision agreement. So both of those, as well as the large external catchment to the west, are all captured and treated through that pond.
Perfect, thank you. Maybe, well, I guess maybe when you're here, so more, maybe just a comment. So obviously, the lot sizes are getting smaller, and the demand for utilities, and I guess hard surfaces becomes more challenging. So I think the need for trees and making it a whole community is always important. So thinking about design and where utilities go and how we get tree space in the small lots is important when we get to the detailed design part to make it a livable community. So just for comment, and recognizing that that's challenging in small lots, but I believe if you look at our community and the tree neighborhoods, those are the ones that people are comfortable living in and that. So that's an important part of the detailed design through whatever you guys can do, so.
Yeah, that comes down to our landscape planning. It goes in concert with the detailed engineering phases, all part of that next step of detailed engineering. It's where we kind of show street trees and where they kind of fit with the rest of the services. As you mentioned, it does get quite tight, but through good kind of planning and good engineering, we're able to fit as many as we can, keeping with the township's development standards.
Perfect, thank you. Another question, I don't know if it'll be necessary for you, but just in regards to, so the rear lotting where residential meets township properties, their plan for fence separation between the two properties? I don't know if Tim?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. Like, so again, one of the conditions of draft approval is a comprehensive fencing plan for all those areas, all those interfaces between private and public land. And I think to answer your question is that, yes, like, there'll be fencing requirements where there's an interface. I think there's some places where different fencing will be provided. We tend to, like, different types of fencing, I should say, depending on where it is in the subdivision, but our preference, you know, there's various different ways of demarcating property, and we've found from a township perspective, our staff opinion is that fencing is the best way to go. There's obviously bollards that could be done, you know, to demarcate areas and this type of thing, but certainly fencing, fencing is our preference. So things like walkway blocks, the trail, the park, the stormwater pond, those types of things, you'll see fencing around it.
Thank you. I'm encouraged by that. I think encroachment becomes a bigger concern as you get into smaller lots. People are always looking for area and that, so I'm glad to hear we've thought about that. The final question, and maybe this is for Tim, but one of the conditions talks about the parkland and the state that it's given to the township. So obviously, there's a lot of different things we can do. It's a great-sized park, and it's going to be great for that neighborhood. But I'm wondering about the installation of playground equipment and kind of some amenities to create that park during construction. Is that part of the development, or does that fall back on the township at a later time?
Yeah, so we'll talk about maybe the two pieces of parkland. There's the linear park, which is the trail that's going to be developed, two-meter-wide asphalt trail at the expense of the developer, so that's going to be built into that. In terms of the parkland, there's a number of different ways and different treatments that municipalities do. I understand that some municipalities require... I understand that some municipalities require a full, what do I want to say, a full build out of the park prior to accepting it. So that would be, you know, landscaping trails, trees, equipment, courts, whatever it is that becomes of that park. What we've asked the developer for, because we don't actually, we haven't done a comprehensive park planning for this block yet, we've, through the conditions, we've asked for a certain level of treatment that doesn't include equipment. So it would be, you know, a surface level treatment where the, you know, grading, landscaping, perhaps a path, I'm not sure, the fencing, obviously, but things like if there's to be any courts there or playground equipment, we haven't asked for that. But certainly open to your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think it's, that park's going to become an important piece of that part of the community, and obviously, we're going to lose it. There's a small park on Lawrence which becomes the connection street. So as soon as the development starts to occur, that park will be lost and there'll be a noticeable loss in the neighborhood. So I would encourage developer and staff to maybe look at a way to get playground equipment into that park early in the development, because, I mean, this is a large development. I'm sure it's going to take time, and I think it would be beneficial to the people moving into the community to have a park space that's usable during construction and not for us to go and install playground equipment five years after the project's starting to wrap up and it turns back over to the township. So I think, I think in terms of the play courts and all those different things, that's something that we can address probably at a township level down the road, but at a minimum, I would be interested in seeing playground equipment in some trees and paths early on in the development to create that livable space for the people as they work through construction. So I would encourage you to think about that in the planning process, so.
Okay, we can for sure take that back. Absolutely.
I believe that's all the questions I have. Councilor Hergit?
Do you know the sidewalks, will they be curb faced or will there be a boulevard?
I'd have to review the, what's in the township road cross section, but it would be in keeping with what's in the development standards for Wellesley.
Chris can address. Sorry, I can take that, Councilor Hergit. There would be boulevards. Yeah, I don't believe curb faced sidewalk is in our development standards.
All right, Councilor Seven.
Bobby, you had mentioned that there was a petition signed by 37 residents regarding the walkway. Could you just refresh me on why the walkway could go where the residents were requesting?
Yeah, that's right. I believe there's a few reasons that the linear park is more, it is better situated on the west side of the plan. One of those reasons is that it's better suited to provide a connection from Gerber Road to Queens Bush in the future. Had the park been on the east side of the plan, it would be, you know, interrupted by various obstacles like an existing neighborhood. So there would be no future opportunity to expand that trail, as well as potentially making that with, you know, future developments towards the west, making that trail wider and making, you know, better use of that space. That's probably the main reasons.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I'm seeing none, so I'll call, vote, all those in favor. And that's carried unanimous. Okay, PND 12 slash 2025, the final acceptance of Plan of Subdivision 58M dash 623, Lotco Two motion required. The recommendation is that the council of the township of Wellesley issue a subdivision final completion certificate to Lotco Two Limited for the plan of subdivision 58M dash 623. And further, that the council of the township of Wellesley authorize staff to release any remaining securities held for the subdivision. And further, that the council of the township of Wellesley adopt a bylaw that includes attachment, included in attachment one to this report, to assume Galena Street as a public highway. May I have a mover? Councilor Hergit, seconded, Councilor Seven. Would staff like to bring this report forward?
Thank you, Council Brick. So this is the last step. The draft approval is one of the first steps. The next report here is one of the last steps. And so Galena Street subdivision has been built out for several years now. But the last thing to do is to make sure that everything's working properly in terms of the infrastructure. Everything has been built according to the drawings, and we've done some work with the developer and with our township engineer to make sure that's happened. So everything has been completed to our satisfaction. And so the last step in that process is issuing what we call a final completion certificate. So there's a two-year maintenance period from when they build the infrastructure to when we take it over. And the idea there is that to make sure everything's functioning properly before we assume things like roads and stormwater infrastructure and all that type of stuff. So we've done that work. Our township engineers reviewed it along with Chris and Daryl. And essentially, there's three parts to the recommendation. So one is to issue a subdivision, a final completion certificate to Lotco Two, they're the developer in this case. The second is that the council authorize staff to release any remaining securities held for the subdivision. So we hold securities letter credit in case we do have to do any remediation work, which we don't have to. So we're comfortable releasing that security back to the developer. And then the third is that Galena Street, even though it's been open to the public, it's not a public highway yet, a public road. So we need to adopt the bylaw, which is attached to the report, to assume Galena as a public highway or a public street, so it becomes officially our property. Take any questions if you have any.
All right, any questions? I'm seeing none. I'll call, call a vote, all those in favor. That's carried unanimous. Does the director have an update?
I do, thank you, Council Brick. The only update tonight is that, as you recall, last meeting, you approved the contract award for Nethery Planning to do the work on the official plan. Nethery Planning and their team is really excited to start the official plan process, and today, we had our internal project team launch meeting. So that included the entire Nethery consulting team, as well as CIO, Director of Public Works, myself, senior planner, to get the ball rolling. So the work has started. We'll call it unofficially. We haven't had an official public launch yet, but realizing this is a public meeting, everybody will be aware now that the work has started. So we'll be coming back to you, coming back to council, once we get some ducks lined up in a row in terms of our communication strategy and our engagement strategy, getting our engage page up and running. We'll be coming back to you in August, in our August meeting, to officially launch the project with yourselves under the Planning Act. So the work is underway, the wheels are turning, we're pretty excited about it, and eager to get work on, get to work on a pretty important document for our, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
So I think we'll revert back to recreation. If it's okay with council and Shelley Wagner's absence, I'll chair that portion of the meeting. We have a staff report. Our rec 52025 municipal alcohol policy revisions motion required. The recommendation that the council of the township of Wellesley approve the revisions to the municipal alcohol policy is outlined in this report. Could I have a mover for that, please? Councilor Seven, Councilor Hergit, and would the director like to bring, address that report?
Sure, thanks, Mayor Noack. As council can see in the report, the municipal alcohol policy was last passed by the township of Wellesley and council in 2014. In 2020, staff at the township of Wellesley, along with the other municipalities in Waterloo region, did a staff review of the policy that did not result in any substantial changes that warranted council approval at that time. Since 2020, many changes have been made to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario that need to be recognized in the municipal alcohol policy if a municipality has a policy, which the township of Wellesley does. Most of the changes proposed will direct users directly to the AGCO website to follow guidelines set out in their application process. By making these changes, it ensures the policy is always up to date with the AGCO and changes that they make. Other changes to highlight are around security and liability insurance. Staff are recommending changing the attendance number up to 250 people, up from 200 people where licensed security is required. Staff are also recommending changing the liability insurance requirement from $2 million to $5 million for these events. The township of Wellesley is the only municipality in the region of Waterloo that does not ask for a minimum of $5 million. In doing some research, there is not a substantial cost increase to the users getting $5 million in comparison to $2 million. The Waterloo Region Insurance Pool has informed staff that a full review of the map will be done by all regional municipalities sometime in 2026. At that time, the results of the full review will be brought before council. Thank you, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Questions? Councilor Hergit?
There's one change there. Remove the liability insurance is available for purchase to the township. Will they, will users, where will they get their insurance?
So for alcohol insurance, there's many insurance providers provide alcohol insurance through the PAL insurance, so that they can get the insurance through, most through their own providers.
Okay. Any questions? Councilor Seven?
So Danny, the smaller townships, they've all gone to the $5 million too, or for that?
In Waterloo region, Township of Wellesley is the only one that's not.
Waterloo region, but what about the smaller, like the Mapleton and those ones? Do you know?
I haven't reached out to municipalities, I can tell you. And the municipality that I currently reside in in East Shore, it's a smaller municipality, it's $5 million there as well. I haven't done the research outside of the region of Waterloo.
My concern would be, we're going to lose potential rentals if, I don't know, if things get too strict. I think there's going to be a lot of baby staggardos that say, you know, we'll do it public or we'll do it in a private setting rather than a public venue. So I don't know, maybe that won't happen. If it hasn't, if it doesn't make a difference money wise or much of a difference, maybe it won't happen, but.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Hergit?
In your research, do you know the difference for insurance costs?
I don't have the number right in front of me. It is something that I can send out to council if they would like that. But again, most of the time in talking to the insurance, the insurance pool, they've said the same thing, that it's not a huge difference. The bigger difference comes in when you go from $5 million to $10 million, and there are some municipalities that have gone to the $10 million liability. So staff are not recommending going to those measures.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And we'll call a question, all in favor, and that's carried. And? Director's report. Service, oh, yeah, service reports, sorry. Are there any service reports? Not at this time. Okay, director's update?
Thanks again, Mayor Noack. Staff are continuing to do summer maintenance in our parks and facilities, including monthly and weekly, weekly playground checks, monthly playground inspections, watering flower boxes and hanging baskets, and cutting all the recreation land grass. This week has been a challenge for the outdoor staff. We've been making sure that they've been taking breaks, getting into the shade and drinking lots of water, so. Jeremy Veras has accepted the position of Recreation Program Coordinator. Jeremy's been with us since beginning of May, and it's been working out very well, so we're happy to have him moved to that position. The posting for the Recreation Customer Service Representative closes this Friday. We have a new facility operator starting on July the 2nd, Greg Mountain. Greg worked for us part-time this past winter, and Greg will be a welcome addition to the team. Fall programming schedules will be released in July. This will provide a schedule for drop-in programs, registered programs, and fitness programs. I will share the schedule with council at the July 8th meeting and then get it out to the public sometime in mid-July. Lastly, recreation staff have put a survey out to all township of Wellesley ICE user groups as well. We've done this the last couple of years, so I will be bringing the results of that survey back to council at the July 8th meeting as well. That's all I have, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
The ICE service, the ICE report, the survey, what are you looking for with that?
We, at the end of each year, we typically send, because with our ICE users, that's our largest revenue factor for the recreation department, ICE users. So a survey goes out each year, just a high-level survey, the goods, the bads, the uglies of their experiences throughout the year. So it's just highlights of that, so.
Basically, feedback on?
Yeah, feedback from them.
Okay, Councilor Hergit?
Are there any, anyone using the ICE surfaces currently?
On Thursday nights in St. Clement's, there's an inline roller hockey league that's been in St. Clement's for a number of years. They're back this year, and we've just recently started drop-in ball hockey on the ICE surface in, at the Bill Geese Recreation Center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further discussion there. I'll move to Roadbridge Committee, Councilor Hergit?
Thank you, Mayor Noack. We have one staff report. RNB 8 slash 2025 Transportation Master Plan Contract Award Number 2025 dash 04. Motion required. The recommendation is that the council of the township of Wellesley award contract number 2025 dash 04 to CI MA Canada Inc. to develop a comprehensive transportation master plan for a total project cost of $149,590, excluding HST to be funded from the infrastructure reserve and the development charges reserve. Can I get a mover? Council Brick, seconded by Councilor Seven, to see director have a report to bring?
Yes, thank you, Council Hergit. So similar to the official plan, RFP that Tim brought last meeting, this recommendation is not for the low bidder. When you go out for RFP versus tendering, you leave the scope open for interpretation a little bit, and you're asking for a proposal from the bidder, not just a price. As such, the low bidder's proposal may not be as complete or detailed as other bids. In this case, staff had a scoring matrix, as you saw, as you can see in the staff report there, and the recommendation coming out of that was overwhelmingly in favor of CMA Canada. Their approach, methodology, and scheduling was very detailed and touched on some important points for us, including specifically mentioning the unique mode of transportation that a number of our residents utilize, being the horse and buggies, and accounting for that in every aspect of this process, including public consultation. And their proposal was significantly more detailed with how they broke down how the time is allocated and how it will be specifically spent. They also proposed 50% more public engagement than the low bidder, and I believe public input's a very important piece of this whole endeavor. All three bidders are very well qualified for this type of consulting work and plan development. However, CMA has recently partnered with True North Safety Group, who conducted our speed study last year, which will make up a component of this transportation master plan. So they got a slight bump on that scoring matrix due to the familiarity with the township already. And the final evaluation point was cost. CMA was a low bidder, and they had almost an identical average hourly rate as the, sorry, CMA and the low bidder had almost identical average hourly rates, with CMA allocating more hours towards areas we felt. M A allocating more hours towards areas we felt were important, like the additional public consultation and engagement, and focusing on those members of the community who use horse and buggy as a primary mode of transportation. This transportation master plan will give council and staff a long term strategic direction for the transportation network. It will look at mobility and identify gaps in our accessibility services, our accessible services. It'll look at transit opportunities, strategic direction related to infrastructure improvements, and will utilize numerous resources, such as that traffic speed study from last year, the regional transportation master plan, the regional rural transit strategy, the asset management plan that was just recently completed, the development charges study that was completed last year, and there'll be several more as well. It'll also be a critical piece of the preparation of the township, township official plan that Tim brought to you last meeting and just spoke about earlier. The, this process will help identify and prepare or update township policies that are relevant to the transportation network, such as traffic calming policies, sidewalk replacement strategies, things like that. And finally, a full cost and risk analysis will be prepared to accompany a prioritized implementation plan that will be presented to council. And I apologize for the long preamble, but this is one of the more exciting projects or tenders or R F Ps that I've brought forward in my five years here. It'll help set the groundwork and strategic direction for the entire department for the next twenty five years. So I'm excited to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the director? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? And that's carried unanimous. Director update?
Yes, more talk. So, thank you, Counselor Hergit. From the operational side, the dust suppressant application program is complete, except for the areas that we're going to be doing the maintenance gravel locations. That maintenance gravel program was scheduled to start tomorrow, but with the weather that we're supposed to get tomorrow and Thursday, Stat Story Holiday next Tuesday, a lot of vacation scheduled for Monday, obviously, as the one day in between weekend and stat holiday, we decided to push it off to July second instead. So that maintenance gravel will be pushed to July second. On a positive note, we haven't received, I've only received two dust complaints so far this year, and which we've dealt with, with either calcium or with the water trucks, and, and we seem to satisfy them. So, so we haven't had, even though we postponed the, the program due to contractor availability, it hasn't really had a negative impact on the dust suppressant. Work has started on the Public Works Aggregate Yard at the end of Park Street in St. Clement's. This will be ongoing throughout the summer as we generate material from various job sites. As an example, we hauled about twenty loads of excess soil from the rec complex today to help clean up the parking lot by the new maintenance shed. So utilizing that excess soil to create a berm there so that we can kind of block the visual or make it a little more visually appealing down there. So you'll see that ongoing. And I guess thank you very much for the approval on the transportation master plan just now. Staff are very excited and looking forward to get started with that process and working with C I M A Canada. Thank you.
Any questions for the director? I just have one near Aggregate Yard. Is it going to be gated?
Yes, so the, the berm that we're going to be creating, we've had a lot of internal discussion, but we're going to be creating in such a way that we're able to mow it. We're hopefully going to put a row of either cedars or evergreens or something on top of it as well. We won't, people won't be able to drive over it, but we'll be able to mow it, and it's, and it will be gated. The gate's going to be on, if you're driving down Park Street, it'll be on the far right side towards the ditch line there, and that berm will come all the way over to where that checkerboard sign is, and that checkerboard will remain in place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to property and fire. Counselor Seven?
Thanks, Mayor Noack. P and F four slash twenty twenty five, proposed amendments to the fireworks bylaw. Recommendation, staff recommends that the council of the township of Wellesley accepts report P and F four slash twenty twenty five, proposed changes to the fireworks bylaw, and further that the council, sorry, that council amend fireworks bylaw twenty nine slash two twenty seventeen, based on the following recommendations. One, decrease number of permitted days and holidays, eliminate civic holiday, and allow fireworks on the day of only. Two, add permitted times to set off fireworks. Three, prohibiting and or limit the sales of fireworks within the township to bricks and mortar sites to eliminate pop up sales. And four, implement, sorry, implement fines. Courtney, would you like to bring a report? Sorry, mover. Counselor Hergit, seconded, Counselor Brick. Sorry, Courtney.
Thanks. So in late two thousand and twenty four, all six municipalities within the region formed a working group to improve fireworks safety, and the focus was on better management of firework use, sales and enforcement. As part of this initiative, a fireworks safety survey was conducted through our Engage platform to gather input both regionally and our local residents as well. So based on those findings, staff recommends that the township of Wellesley council amend the fireworks bylaw to reduce the number of permitted days fireworks can be set off to Victoria Day, Canada Day, and Labor Day, day of only, with permitted times of eight P M. to eleven P M. Regulate the sale of fireworks to prohibit or limit the sale starting in two thousand and twenty six, and finally implement fines for fireworks being set out, set off outside of the permitted times.
Thanks, Courtney. Any questions, discussion? Counselor Brick?
Thanks for the support. Just a question regarding, we just had the backyard barbecue, and that was a great event, and finished off with the fireworks show. How would this bylaw affect an event such as that?
Yeah, that would be.
That won't change. This, the, the changes in this bylaw will be for, we have low hazard and high hazard fireworks. So any of our high hazard fireworks, any clubs that want to have an event, that sort of thing, will they still have to do the permitting through the township? That's not being changed at all. We still do that. Same, this is just your consumer fireworks that should pick up at the corner store and do with the neighborhood on, and that's really.
Thank you.
Counselor Hergit?
How, how do you plan on implementing the fines? Would it be through the bylaw or through the fire department as well, or? Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. And does Chief Redmond have a report for us?
A very quick one. Thank you, Counselor Seven. Um, hang off here. I was in a meeting last week with the, the province Ministry of Health, representing our central ambulance communication center in Cambridge, which dispatches Waterloo EMS. And we were slated, our local C A C C was slated to change. There's a new system coming in provincially that some of our other regions have started. It's called Medical Priority Dispatch System. We were slated for twenty twenty seven. We're going to go live with that twenty twenty six in December. So we just had a meeting with that on January, July ninth, we were meeting with the, the four rural chiefs, and that will change how you call nine one one specifically. There'll be some significant changes for the fire department. Moving forward, they, they expect that, that will actually probably decrease fire calls a little bit, because they're going to be changing their initial intake when they ask questions to having twenty three hundred different codes to ask questions. Where right now, if somebody calls and says they're having chest pain, they'll just say, send an ambulance out, lights and sirens, they call a code four because it's a possible life threat. Moving forward, they'll have a number of other questions to make sure that they didn't just pull a muscle because they worked out too hard or something like that. They won't be going from code four to code threes that you've known for years and years. They're going to have a caller system, purple being the priority call, red being priority. The, the reason being to make sure that ambulances aren't being redirected where they're not supposed to. And they said there's a high percentage of calls that they go out to with their lights and sirens that aren't high priority calls and fire on our end as well. We're not, we're not running the way the cities are, but we should see a little bit of a decrease in calls that we just, we don't have to be at. So that's, that ball is rolling, and that will go live in December, probably with more interest to Counselor Hergit and Counselor Brick, knowing how that's going to affect them. But it should be, ideally, it's, it's a better service to the public in getting the, the resources where they need to be. So that's all I have for fire today. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Redmond. Does anybody have questions or? Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, move on to admin and finance. Staff report, A F and P twenty one twenty 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 five, which is the audited financial statements for twenty twenty four. A motion required that the council of the township of Wellesley approve the twenty twenty four year end audited financial statements as presented by the township auditors, M N P L L P. Have a mover for that, please. Counselor Seven, Counselor Brick. And would you like to say more? Would you like to bring that forward?
Sure. I don't have anything to add to Darren's presentation today. So.
Okay.
Just looking for your approval today.
Any questions? No, that was a very thorough report. So, yeah, all in favor? And that's carried. Do we have a director's update?
Yeah, sure. I don't have much of an update today, but I would like to acknowledge the effort that went into the backyard barbecue. So thanks to, to Amy and her team that did a fantastic job, planning and coordinating and executing on all the events on, on Friday night. And I think Courtney was involved in that as well. So, you know, shout out to Courtney as well. So thanks for that. I could name so many other people, but Courtney and Amy are here tonight, so I just wanted to thank them.
Absolutely. Well spoken, because there was a, a team effort. Like, it was, it was amazing evening. It really was amazing.
It was, but yeah.
Things just ran so smoothly. It was a lot of nice to see all, all those little kids running around. And it was great. Music was wonderful. Anyway.
Okay.
Any, any other questions for the director? No information, unfinished business. Next meeting, boy, we haven't got Counselor Wagner here. Counselor Seven, would you like to move some? Motion to adjourn, that the committee of the whole meeting does not adjourn.